Police. Mr. Dattler, Eric, Ms. McRyer.
Eric.
Thor, here, Ms. Butler.
Eric.
We've got six in attendance, we've got one, four, and we've got a meeting, okay. Welcome. Uh, minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes of July fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Kelly to approve the minutes of July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, are there any corrections to them yet? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, the stability requirement, uh, Mr. Thor, would you read that for us in a second?
Sure.
Can I?
I'm gonna do it really quick, is that what that is?
In the interest of stability, I pledge to promote stability by listening, being respected, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, president's report, there is nothing for me this evening, clerk's report, I have nothing to report tonight. My tone, uh, planning and zoning commissions reports, uh, Mrs. Deppner is not with us this evening. However, the P and Z did meet last week, July, uh, July, today's is the tenth. Yeah, and they were working on some changes to the zoning codes. And one of the things that has come up has been impervious surfaces. And the amount of impervious surface that is allowed on the lots. So, the planning and zoning commission would like the board to take this issue into consideration. And then make a decision as to whether or not we want to direct the zoning board to follow through upon working upon developing limitations on impervious lot. Lot ability.
Is this, is this to the point of what we were discussing last meeting with the fifteen percent that's permitted? So we're looking at expanding that to make it larger?
Or control, right now, we've got a percentage of the lot for the building.
Right.
But we do not say anything about your driveway or your patio. Technically, you could pave your entire yard. At this point.
But those are the impervious surfaces.
Those are the impervious surfaces that the planning and zoning is looking at and asking for permission to investigate and set standards on.
And give a recommendation.
Hmm?
And give a recommendation.
Back to us, correct?
Sure.
We have to think about it and decide whether or not we want to have them go down that path.
I think we should, because it was relevant at the last meeting that some, there are a number of lots where they don't meet the fifteen percent criteria for the house, so it'd be good to maybe consider what, what is the, what is the lowest percentage we have with the current residents, maybe make it consistent with the code, and then speak to also concrete or driveways, see if we want to change that, because there's a big push for maintaining the outdoor notion of sleepy hollow, and if something gets completely paved, I think it's worth a discussion beforehand.
What is the negative impact if they say, for instance?
The negative impact is gonna be that the villagers don't want to be told they can only have so many square feet on the driveway.
Environmentally, though, does it make a?
The big thing is.
That's what, that's more what I'm talking about.
That's drainage.
It's a drainage issue through this area that they're concerned, where everybody's beginning can be concerned about. The more concrete and asphalt, the more water goes downhill, more water comes downhill, the more problems we have down through here. In the lower areas.
Maybe we could ask that part of the recommendations have various options and kind of tiers, like maybe the whole, like, right now, it says fifteen percent for just any of the building on the property. Maybe we say like, how much can actually be a structure or an impervious surface?
That's a kind of research, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think it's.
We're gonna give back to them unless we've got questions about it before we give it back to them.
Do we know what other municipalities are doing?
That's part of the research.
Yeah.
They're looking into that.
Looking into that.
And then, how about people, um, stay up the hill versus down here?
It would be village.
It'd be village-wide.
Yeah. It'd be something like, right now, the Kane County Stormwater, uh, system, Kane County Stormwater Management, is that what they are? Has standards on impervious surfaces, and they say anything over twenty thousand square feet, we gotta contact them. But if it had been done before two thousand and two, it's okay, and can be redone. So, yeah, we wanna do something like that, and say, hey, you're allowed up to five thousand square feet of concrete or asphalt. And if you were built before two thousand and twenty, you can have seventy-five hundred square feet of asphalt.
Might be a good one, a good guideline with the county that has employees now.
But anyway, it's gonna cost us, because P and Z is gonna have to go through and do the research, we're gonna have to make up some ordinances, we're gonna have to run it through Mr. Schuster, we're gonna have to run it through the public hearing, the publication, the transcripts, uh, it's gonna be fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars just in fees. To consider the question, so.
Do we know, do we know what the cost roughly is?
That's roughly the cost, I mean, the last public hearing cost us five hundred and seventy dollars for the transcript. It cost us seventy-five dollars for the publication, and it cost us about five hundred dollars from Mr. Schuster. And then I don't have the engineers or the building departments in there, so, you know, it was probably close to fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. So you can take that in the time you need to start through the process.
It doesn't seem like an urgent issue, I don't seem, it doesn't seem that there's any issues coming up right now, but because of, I remember noting that when we were reading about the proposal from last meeting, and noting that they were already at, I think, eighteen percent. And then we were a lot of them extra, which I think was, was fine, but if, I would like to see us make an effort to make sure all of our codes and ordinances are consistent, and I think this is a necessary step to do that.
Then the general consensus of the board is to have P and Z continue their research and investigation to impervious surfaces and report back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, right, thank you all, I will pass that message, Kelly, you can pass that message on to Ms. Dattler. Okay, that's it for P and Z, attorney's report, we don't have anything, get something up from him later, uh, the engineer report. Uh, Mr. Heine, Rownton Parks, would you like to take the engineers?
Sure, I'll, um, village engineer contacted us today, he apologizes for not being here, but he wanted some information put out to the board, he didn't want to delay anymore. And I'm gonna refer to page seven right now, um, and it's a memorandum from him, you can look at the figures right there, but we have bid, and I'm gonna round off numbers, we have an estimate for the two thousand twenty-three street improvement program of three hundred and two thousand dollars. We were waiting to hear on what the prices of asphalt would come in at, and they did come in, and since the last meeting, we've had six bids uh, for our program. Uh, on page eight, there's a lengthy synopsis, if you will, there of the bids, I would just refer you to the last line, it's a summary of the bids, we received six bids. The lowest bid came in at two hundred and forty-eight, I'm rounding up, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, that's about eighteen percent lower than the estimate that the engineer had, uh, had given us. Um, with that extra money, he's looking at a project possibly on Sleepy Hollow Road on the um, north end, up towards seventy-two for a drainage problem there. That's still in the works, so what he was like tonight is, and I will, I'll make a motion right now for discussion later. Uh, move to award the two thousand twenty-three sleepy house street improvement program contract to Schroder Asphalt Services in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Provided that the village has not received any protests within seven days of the bid opening, by the way, if I didn't say it, that's the lowest bid by far. Um, he mentions here that we have had work done with them in the past, that I got approved, and we were happy with the services they provided the village. Well, consider that a motion.
Second.
Moved by Heine, seconded by Thor, to award the two thousand twenty-three sleepy hollow street improvement program contract to Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated in the amount of two thousand four, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Authorizing the village president in Florida to execute the documents necessary for the project. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
I have a question, real quick, um, and I could be totally off on this, so, um, you said, Ed, mainly for Sleepy Hollow Road, is that, is that what I got?
There's a difference in what the engineers had estimated at three hundred and two thousand dollars and the two hundred and forty-eight. So that's gonna give us fifty-three thousand dollars extra.
Okay.
We have budgeted for three hundred and two thousand dollars.
Okay.
So now we can spend that, and one of the projects we pulled earlier, the curbing along Sleepy Hollow Road, the north edge on the west side. Because it was gonna run us about fifty thousand, we now have about fifty-three thousand dollars.
And I believe in the curbs, because I am actually, I'm one of the great cul-de-sacs and have them, um, and they do wonders compared to other ones, I think they're amazing. Um, but we had just a suggestion, Locust, we were, we didn't get to do as much of Locust as we had originally planned. What are thoughts on moving some of it to improve Locust?
The problem with Locust is that we're doing the water main project, and if we do something on Locust, it could turn it up, um, after, so we put in the water main.
Okay.
We're gonna invest the money and have it all gone up.
Understood, okay. Just wanted to be clear, thank you.
A huge portion of the budget is going towards Locust.
Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we do Schroder in the past, in my time on the board, and we've always been very happy with their work, um, they're doing well.
The high bid was three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And I got competitive, two forty-eight, two fifty-eight, two seventy-eight.
And Jeff mentioned to you or anybody about the difference in unit prices between, I mean, I'm not sure what some of these items are, but um, in some of the bids, like, the aggregate wedge shoulders are pretty consistent, are about fifty, sixty thousand, and then somebody has it for a hundred and twenty-four. Um, but then I wanted to check out Schroders, and they had some that were higher than other unit, I, I assume Jeff looks into these and.
Right, they, they checked them, they got the bids open Friday afternoon, and they took them back and did what they call a bit tally, and you'll see that, yes, Schroder brought their prices in lower in some items, but higher on others, current brought them in high across the board.
Okay.
And that's the way they.
That's typical, we'll see across something.
A big saving with Schroder was on the patching.
The patching?
And speculation on that is, the patching we've asked them to do is located off of Locust, lower mobilization.
Okay.
Whereas other people might have just said, hey, it's a patching job, I got mobilization and tack it to them, and not stop and think, I'm right there at the intersection of. You know, so it's not really costing me much more money to post job. So, that's interesting about throwing, you know, figure out where they're really trying to get you.
I was just, yeah, because some of these, I mean, a lot of these items, I just had to start Googling to find out what they were, I still wasn't quite sure, but obviously I deferred to the bid and them, but then to look up the different, to see that, some of the differences in prices, I'm just wondering why.
Suppliers, it depends on who their supplier is, and do they have a volume business or something like that.
Okay.
Also, it depends upon where they're located at, too, how far they have to come to work.
The contractors or the suppliers?
The contractors, and their, their suppliers' prices are higher if they have to come in from further out. So, that makes the difference. Yeah, there it goes.
That's all.
We had some real good prices, though, in the tollway, it's been done.
Oh, yeah.
There were a lot of contractors in the neighborhood. But those days were all worthwhile. Okay, no further comments, questions, roll the call, please. Mr. Dattler.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Heine.
Aye.
Ms. McRyer.
Aye.
Ms. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Six permanent books and no negative votes in motion, so carries, well. Okay, uh, finance, Director Finance, let's go back.
Request a motion for the approval of the warrants in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-three cents.
So. Yes.
Okay, motion to approve the warrants in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Eight oh eight, forty.
Eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-three cents. Any additions, deletion, comments, questions? One? I've got one. Are we really getting decent for ninety-five cents again?
I guess so.
Don't question.
Worked, one did work out, so, okay, I don't think you have no other comments or questions, uh, we did the roll, no, I'll call Mr. Please.
Okay.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Dattler.
Aye.
Ms. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Tommy.
Aye.
Mr. Heine.
Aye.
Ms. McRyer.
Aye.
Six permanent votes and no negative votes in motion, so carries. Okay.
Two thirty, it's two thirty-one.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Coming down. Hundred fifteen, yeah. All right, it started about at one fifteen each, three times.
Yeah.
I thought we get one, three hundred and forty-five gallons.
Yeah, I think it's three hundred and one fifteen.
Okay. That's a little bit more than, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you, Eugene. Uh, public comments, Mr. Court.
I'm excited, I'm on feed.
Oh. So you don't care to say anything this evening? It's free. Okay. Uh, moving on from comments then, trustee reports, Mr. Heine, Rownton Parks.
Uh, last meeting, uh, Public Works, they asked for authorization to hire third employee that has been, had been budgeted for. Um, that, that individual, but Jalen Jones, actually started the next day or two days after uh, authority was given, I heard he's working out well, I would ask the residents and the board members, whenever you see him, say hi, introduce yourself, make him feel part of the village. Um, I don't think so. Is hopeful and, eh, good attitude and everything, good person you have on board. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Jalen, awesome. Finance? Mr. Thor.
Um, I'm gonna turn this over to, uh, uh, Mr. Van, but he did discover something very interesting as far as getting us better return on, uh, on the investments that the village makes. Way better.
So. The board, uh, seconded to the I M T training, Illinois Treasurer's Institute Training this past, um, November. One of the presentations was by, um, A M G. And, uh, it was about diversification of funds, how they came into business, is that it was under bond proceeds access. And what they would do is that when you issued a bond, there's a lag time between issuing of the bond, you receive the money and the expenditure. So you have to invest that money, you just can't let it just sit in your checking account. And so what this company did is, they would invest that money to get a greater return, to reduce the cost of the, the long-term cost of the loan. They have now expanded into doing the same thing for excess funds in our, in general checking accounts and stuff like that. This particular company is out of California. And, uh, right now, what they are saying is that they can give us basically a five percent rate of return. Is secured with, uh, with government bonds, um, and would supposedly be within, um, our diversification or matter, um, the security of our, our finance, our finance policy, our financial investment policy. So, uh, being a little skeptical, I just wanted to see how much of a difference it would make if we did this type of thing. Um, we are currently getting like point three five percent interest in our bank accounts or, or checking accounts. And if you calculate out it basically a four percent rate, um, for the past year, for the general fund. Let that print about, but apparently didn't.
It's on page twenty-four.
Yeah, um.
Oh, that's the water sewer.
Yeah, the water sewer. Water sewer is, uh, we would have gotten, well, with the checking account for the last six months, we got one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents from First American. If we just did it at a four percent rate, we would have gotten seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, okay? So then the question is, is while we have Illinois funds, and right now they're paying a little over, um, five percent. We've got about two and a quarter million dollars there. So we're getting about ten thousand dollars in, in the interest there. So why don't we just put all the money in Illinois funds? Well, it's, comes back to do, we wanna put all our eggs in the same basket. You know, so if, if we go down the route that, yes, we need to move this money out of, out of First American, um, where do we put it? You know, one of the concerns is, is that we need this, these funds for the day-to-day operation, they assure me that if we get it, get the request to them by two, three A M., we would have the money the next day. And that's kind of what we have with Illinois funds. So, um, the question is, is do we wanna pursue more diversification? Um, when I first started here, there was a, we had a BMO Harris account that was paying even less than the point three five percent. So we ended up closing that account and moving that money to Illinois funds, but then, you know, do you want to look at diversifying more, or you want to just put the excess cash in Illinois funds, or just keep everything the way it is?
So we have not put excess funds in Illinois, in the Illinois funds yet?
No, we have that, so basically what happens is the money just kind of builds up in the individual accounts. Um, and then, um, then we're short, we'll transfer it from the Illinois funds to, um, our, our general accounts. So like for the, the general fund, we were really running low, because we hadn't received our property tax payment yet, and that was four hundred and thirty thousand, so we ended up having to move over two hundred and fifty thousand. Well, now we've got way too much money sitting in the account, but we had to move to fifty, because we didn't know when, you know, when they're, they say, well, this is the date, but you, you know, you can't always depend on it.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned A M G, I thought you said five percent at first, but then on the paperwork, I'm seeing four percent.
Conservative.
Okay, so it's.
So when you consider at five percent, it's basically another thousand a month.
And then, you said with one of them, we can get money back as, once we've, once we've started with, like, you were talking about finally getting this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What kind of timeframe would we have in order to move money back if it was needed?
Basically, we got it like in, within a day or two. You know, they, they don't guarantee it, but, um, talking to A M G, they says that, you know, if we get it to them before two P M. Eastern Time, that will happen the next day. So basically what they do is they, um, get all these small municipalities that have some excess cash, and they, you need fifty million to buy into a fund, so there's no way we will ever come up with fifty million, so to consolidate with all these small municipalities to then be able to bottom into the fund in order to get the better rate of return. So their fees come out of the interest, so they don't charge us a direct fee, our, our interest rate is a little bit lower than to cover their fees. No, I'm not advocating for this particular company or anything, I'm just, you know, I'm just bringing up the question of what do we wanna do, do we want to just keep things the way they are? Potentially losing money, or do we wanna investigate, you know?
And there are no fees on Illinois funds?
Basically, no fees on Illinois funds, yeah.
So we're looking at a slight, deep, deep, slight, slightly less with A M G because of the fees they'd be taking out.
Yes.
But effectively, the two return rates are about the same, and both places, we could also get the money, we could get money within about twenty-four, forty, okay?
Yeah, but again, like I said, the, the, the question is, is do you wanna put all your eggs in one basket?
I would be in favor of splitting it and keeping it more diversified. Not put it in one basket, yeah.
Right.
If you'd have two baskets or three baskets, that's fine.
Never play in one basket yet.
Very advantaged to put it, like, by the lot of, by the large amount of money being larger by putting it into them?
No.
It's not gonna do any difference, there's no tiers, so, okay.
No, we're already at the, yeah. We're at the most.
Do we know what causes involved, uh, municipalities they represent?
They're out of California, I could get a list of, you know, who they work with and stuff like that, um, like I said, they'd be presented at, you know, the institute and, um, you know, I looked them up online, they, they seem to have a good rating and stuff like that. Um, I had a hour-long conversation with them, you know, uh, face, not Facebook, but, uh, you know, face-to-face, um, on the internet kind of thing. So.
The question, I'm gonna, how much are we gonna put in that pot? So what are the dangers and the protections involved?
So we've basically got about a million dollars in the, in the water C A fund right now. You know, there's no way that we're gonna spend it unless we start the, uh, water main project. Um, then we've got some extra money to come in, um, from the general fund account, so basically, these checking accounts are not a single fund, they're already a mixture of multiple funds that bring their balance up to that, that amount. An idea of, of like what's in. Like our, the water sewer fund is a combination of the water, the sewer, um, the D I N E, and the water D I N E, and the sewer D I N E. Um, Elgin, or the Illinois funds, as a general funds, five-year cap, and sewer, uh, D I N E. The general fund, or our general checking account, is the general fund, the five-year cap, security deposits, and then we've got some, uh, the waters, yeah, on that, anything with that. So we also have, um, two max rate funds, um, that are quite as good as five percent, but they're better than the regular checking accounts. We have one at, um, Elgin, and the other one is at, um, uh, First American, and for that, we, we only knew, for First American, when it's only the M F T money, we have to keep that money segregated, because the state, um, audits that on a yearly basis. Um, so we can't put anything else into it. Uh, we can't put some money into the max rate fund with, with Elgin, all that came about is, again, we were earning pretty much zero interest, and they approached us and said, hey, we, we have this, this investment feature, would you be interested? When we looked at it, uh, we said yes.
So what would next steps be?
Um, well, we could probably kick this to the finance committee and have them do a little bit more research on it, and we have them make a recommendation. Or we can just make a decision that, yes, we wanna do this and explore it.
What are you suggesting? Do you suggest?
Do you suggest that we have more more research, or do you feel comfortable?
I would like more input than just my opinion.
Also, our finance committee, we'll look at it, you know, we've got the audit coming up.
When's the next finance meeting?
We haven't set one.
Should be sometime in August or September. So it should be fairly soon. That consensus of the board then, that we'll have finance committee take a look into this and report back to us.
So the guy from A M G says generally, the boards are not involved in these decisions, it's the person who is in my position, and I am not comfortable making those. That's just with someone else's money like this.
And that's all from finance.
All right, but uh water and sewer.
Um, not much to report, although I have met, I I've been speaking with a couple residents who are expressing interest on Rainbow Drive to shift from well to city water. But we're just in the initial stages, I'll be meeting with her tomorrow. And just speaking to Kyle and Jeff, Joe Nemec from the past, and Wendy about what the procedure is and how we proceed from there.
Uh, place in public safety for D Atley.
Uh, no report tonight.
Build in an environment, acquire.
I do have a report tonight. So um I've got a couple calls in the last, since the last meeting, so two calls, so one was from a resident that came in asking questions about um some code as well as reporting a neighbor for a code violation. Um, and he called and expressed that he he didn't felt feel like his questions were answered, he didn't feel like didn't feel like he was treated properly. Um, I got another call from a resident, um she had mentioned that a village employee hung up on her as she was asking questions. And then a final incident is near in, near and dear to home, and I don't wanna throw employees or residents under the bus, but this one I will. But we had an unfortunate incident with my husband and my son's dog. And he didn't feel, when he came to take care of the situation, he didn't feel that he was treated properly as well. So I wanna bring this to light, and I never come with a problem without a solution, so um we have a lot of younger families moving in this neighborhood, we've had this conversation a couple times before. My suggestion is, if you take a look at millennial families, right, they want their values to align with their villages, their companies, they want everybody's um values to align. So, and that is, we've ever studied, as business owners have studied, what, you know, younger younger families want, and they they do want their values aligned. So I think, President, you brought the civility pledge aligned, I think that's amazing, I think it's great, I think it's good for them, it's good for us. I wanna bring forth to light that all employees do the civility pledge, I love this. I think that's a good idea. Um, and one employee shared with me that she's been a um an employee for thirty-five years, so my guess is maybe we haven't gone over code of conduct for a long time. So maybe we can update code of conduct, maybe we can get everybody to do the civility pledge. This is my suggestion. So whether the board agrees with it or not, but I wanted to come forth with with maybe updating some codes.
Which codes?
Well, I mean, a code of conduct, right, so a code of conduct is a set of
Well, confused, building and codes, or are we talking personnel?
Yeah, exactly, so, you know, value standards, principles, outlining on what employers expire, maybe.
That's more personnel than
Okay, so that's my suggestion, cause we've gotten some complaints ironically in the last two weeks. But that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Jim. Uh, building and zoning.
The only thing I have at the working with um Jeff left and have um advised the residents that have contacted me about the situation up in the bluffs. And they will be sending um pictures in which they've been taking, I've got pictures of the situation as well, but um and Jeff said he needs them for more when they go to court, so I'd ask these residents to send them over, make sure they're dated, make sure he knows who they're from. So that he has enough does it still continue and still going on, so unfortunately.
Anything else?
No.
That's it, all right, thank you, Kelly. Okay, old business, uh, under old business this evening, we've got ordinance twenty-three dash seven, ordinance granting a variance to by maximum lot coverage requirements of sections eight dash three A dash one to allow for the construction of a sunroom addition to the property located at nine oh three Holly Court in the hill of sleepy hollow. We have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven.
I move it.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Bo, to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven. Do I have to read this thing again? Uh, this is the one where we had the public hearing uh in June, and the individual showed up uh at the meeting on the fifth of July. We discussed it, and uh the attorney drafted up the ordinance and sent it back to us for uh review and approval this evening, so with the motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash seven, any comments, questions, discussion? Being none, roll call please. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. McRae.
Aye.
Six for any votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries. Well, uh, okay, that is it for old business, move on to new business. And we have a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Cub Cadet, zero turn more. Moved by Hardy, seconded by D Atley. I just went alphabetical. Uh, to approve the purchase of twenty twenty-three Cub Cadet, zero turn more at the cost of eight thousand five hundred and change. Uh, comments, questions, discussion?
I could ask Kyle to give us some background.
And how do you get that just now?
Uh, you can thank Bill for the background. Uh, so the background is Ralph Tom gave us a demo mower, Will used it, I used it, Dylan used it, and we love it, it's uh it's it's a stand-on mower, zero turns, kind of what you see all the landscaping companies do nowadays instead of the sit-down. The issue that we have with our mowers is I have one zero turn, it's seventy-two inch. So it's a big deck, so when you do the swales, it'll leave, it looks like mohawks in the grass because the deck is so big. It's almost too wide for the spell, so it's good for that. Uh, it's good to have another zero turn because if something happens to either one and it's down, say a belt's broken, we're out of mower for, especially in April and May when the grass is growing, like it's on steroids. That's that right behind it. Uh, it's a fifty-four inch cut, so then we have a, we have the little push mowers for like residential that you see at people's houses. We have a, was it forty-eight inch, forty-eight inch walk behind. This is a fifty-four and a seventy-two inch, and then we have the big one for the park. So we kind of have a spectrum of all different sizes where we need to get them into small areas or big areas.
Is it in your budget?
It is, it'll come out of the five-year cap, we're gonna split it between uh roads and parks and rural property because we use it for both.
It it wasn't part of the five-year cap budget, but we do have money that we could use.
Bill, do you like it?
I love it.
Just watch, it's gonna be a lot better rounds with the novel this year.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Kyle concerning the Cub Cadet? Not, roll call please. Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. McRae.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six for any votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries. The Cub Cadet in the family now. Uh, the next one is the approval of uh purchase or a job contract for ponds for some culvert work at twelve oh nine timber. No, twelve, twelve oh nine? Twelve oh nine timber. Uh, if those of you not familiar, timber and crane, we have a drainage issue coming down up there. And at one point, it's jumping the culvert and going against the building, the resident's house, is that what the situation is up there?
Um, it's starting to accumulate in his in his yard, the there's a a culvert that's mostly blocked, actually I have to go in there and shovel it out by hand. Um, and it's it's literally not draining down the way it's supposed to, and it's hasn't gotten to his house yet, but he's he's concerned about it, I would be.
So they, yeah, so uh the culvert up there on timber, it collects on one side of the street in the concrete swell, and then it crosses underneath uh timber, and then it crosses again, and where it feeds out into the yard into the stream on big rains, it looks like a bomb went off in their yard, so they're gonna not, there's years of accumulation of uh dirt, rocks, sticks in the culvert, they're gonna vacuum that out. And then they're gonna do some excavation below the culvert to divert the water into the stream, so it does not flow into their property so much. And it's just something that a couple of works can't do because we don't have the equipment to do it, we'd have to crawl in there and put fill-up buckets of dirt and then crawl out and dump it.
So they're gonna hide it back in and put the riprap in on for four thousand forty-five dollars.
Five thousand three hundred.
No, we have to rent our machine for the day.
Okay. Five thousand three hundred twenty, okay. So we have a motion to approve the contract with ponds for the five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Moved by Tom, seconded by Thor, to approve the purchase order for the ponds for the culvert work on timber in the amount of five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
I just, I don't, go ahead. Same company that did the
Your swell?
Yeah. They did a really good job, so I don't think there will be a problem.
So I have a question, a question about that, because this um this issue was brought up before I was on the board, but a couple meetings that I was at. So and I wanna say it was George Hoffman, maybe that brought it up uh prior. But the culverts, it seems to be an ongoing, ongoing issue of us paying for people's culverts and things become, I'm sorry, what? It does go?
Yeah, it's not, it's not what anybody
Okay, okay.
And actually, I have a question, I was noticing, is this across the street from that little, the little right-of-way that we just approved, re-rented?
Yeah.
Is that?
It's up the street, yeah.
But is is it directly across from it?
I am across the street.
Oh, you are, okay, I was, the way it was lined up on the map, I was wondering, was that a cause or like any kind of an effect with what's happening on?
No, that's that's below where uh there's basically a concrete catch, like a concrete base, and it goes just before that driveway where you can see the swell open up, and then it crosses.
That has nothing to do with it?
No.
Thank you.
All the comments, questions, roll call please. Uh, with the the motion by Thomas and side anybody Thor. Okay, uh, Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. McRae.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Only votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries. And for the trifecta. Mr. Killinger would like us to consider the purchase of a Moorbark brush chipper. Our old eager beaver brush chipper has seen its better days. And uh So uh it's about time to consider one of those for replacement, and the Moorbark has submitted a bid of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. We have a motion to so approve.
So move D Atley.
Second, pardon, moved by D Atley, seconded by Hardy to approve the purchase of a Moorbark brush chipper in two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Do we have to approve the trade-in of beef and chipper?
Well, that's part of the price here.
Yeah, I know, but like in in years past, when we got rid of equipment, you'd have have one approval to get rid of the whole equipment, you know, share that.
I was gonna ask about that.
Even in the trade-in.
Just true. We can take a look into that. But uh, go ahead with this, and if that's the case, and now we can put that on the uh agenda for the August summit meeting.
So I was gonna ask about that, what's happening to the old one?
Uh, the old one, it's got, right now, there's a feed wheel bearing, so like when you put the log in, there's a bottom wheel with teeth on it, the bearing's busted on it. So it doesn't feed anymore, so we'd have to replace the bearing. It's got over four thousand hours on it, and it's just, it's it's a dr- it's a a wheel chipper, they don't make them anymore, they make drum chippers, they're more efficient, it's just that it's gonna get to the point where we're in, instead of uh buying a new chipper, we'd be sinking thousands into just replay something that's
Will they, will they take the old one and?
Yeah, they, so they're they're offering three thousand five hundred dollars on the old one.
And 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 so right now, basically what you're saying is that the current chipper is worthless because it's broken and we cannot find the parts to fix it.
Yes.
It's only thirty-five years old.
So it's, in essence, it's worthless.
Yes.
Scraps.
But if we have to I kinda need a chipper in now, so I'm gonna have to wait till the August meeting.
Well, if you need the chipper now, can we move forward?
That's what I'm thinking here.
If he needs it now, he needs it now.
Yeah, and if we're not if we're not, why don't we just go and vote without the trade-in, so we have the vote on?
Because if it's already part of the current, it's on the agenda as part of the
Part of, yeah.
Part of that.
We're approving the sixty-two eighty hundred with the trade-in.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We'll just work with that, and if we have to declare a surplus on the seven, we'll declare a surplus on the seven.
Also, this um was budgeted at sixty-five thousand dollars for this year to be done.
That's why we need the thirty-five hundred trade-in. Okay, so we will authorize the purchase of it, we'll take care of the uh paperwork on the thirty-five hundred dollar trade-in with uh Mr. Helms.
You can, also, it's uh, it can take three inch three inches more in diameter than yours, we can do a little bit bigger trees.
Well, damn, I'm in that.
Okay, all, any other comments or questions concerning the purchase? Not, roll call please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. McRae.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six for any votes, no negative votes, Kyle, you've got yourself a new chipper. Okay, there's no need for executive session this evening.
I move, will you do?
Moving second, all in favor, seven five minutes, say aye. Close pause. Motion carried, we are determined.